Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for July 18th, 2022. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting for rebroadcast on Channel 6 and streaming live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to city council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission will need to come to the lectern to speak into the microphone and give their name and address for the record. Planning Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by council whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the city council. At this time, I would like to introduce the commission. On my far left is Ken Lackey, our Assistant Secretary. On his right is Carol Fisher, our Secretary. To my immediate left would normally be our Recording Secretary Connie Gau, but she has an excused absence. My name is Don Schuman. I am the current Chair. On my right is Ray Waskey, our Vice Chair, and on the far right is Commissioner Don Rethman. For staff tonight, we have David Roller, City Planner, and Ryan Holmesy, City Planner. All right. Tonight, first item on the agenda under new business is a lot consolidation for 3100 Farah Hills Avenue. It is case PC-22-014. And for staff, I believe it's Mr. Roller.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Chairman. I'm going to be the Acting Recording Secretary tonight. And should I call Roll? Does that happen at the beginning of the meeting?
Nope.
Doesn't happen?
Just when we get into motions.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Schuman. We have received an application for a lot consolidation consisting of three lots, one existing lot and two part lots. The existing lot is the current home of James Free Jewelers. And then Hanson Audio was just to the south there in the middle of your screen. It's right here. And that is the two part lots. This would consolidate all of those lots into one single lot of about three quarters of an acre total, and it would comprise the entire block face there between Cushing and Rock Hill. We reviewed the application for compliance with the subdivision ordinance of the City of Kettering, and we determined that it wasn't compliance with two minor issues. One was that the record plan was not sealed by the surveyor, which would need to happen prior to signatures. The other thing was that Rock Hill is referred to on the record plan as Rockville, which sounds a lot more exciting, but it is not the right name. So in all instances there, that would need to be corrected to Rock Hill prior to signature. We do anticipate that with this lot consolidation that James Free Jewelers would be expanding onto those lots to the south. We don't have any plans that have been shared with us at this time, so we don't know if that would be a demolition and new construction or just an expansion into the existing space. But that is what's anticipated with the eventuality of these lots being consolidated. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Lackey, any questions?
What you're showing here says Hanson Real Properties LLC is the owner of that property. I assume that's not no longer correct?
Correct. That's no longer correct. The James Free, which is Lasada LLC, did purchase all of those. What we're looking at right here on the screen is a reflection of what the county has as their database. It's not always updated every day. It's usually updated once a month or so, so sometimes those things have a little bit of a lag as far as when they appear in our system.
Okay. Thank you.
But yeah, it is Lasada LLC is the actual property owner.
Ms. Fisher?
None.
Mr. Waskey?
I have none.
Mr. Rethman?
No questions.
My only question is the consolidation. I mean, I know it's pretty much just a formal matter. They meet all the criteria. Does it have any implication to the fact there's two buildings now? It's going to be a single lot or?
No, that doesn't create a non-conforming issue right now. It would still be...
I figure with the commercial, you'd be okay.
Yeah.
Just like doing it with the residential. All right. That's the only question that I have. There is a time allowed for the applicant to make any presentation. Seeing no presentation, then we aren't going to ask the applicant any questions. Staff recommendation?
We are recommending approval with two conditions. One, that the surveyors shall seal the record plan prior to Planning Commission's signature. And two, that all instances of Rockville be replaced with the corrected Rock Hill.
Any final commission comments, questions, anything? All right. My usual question, the applicant is aware of the two conditions?
Yes, they are.
All right. All right. Since we have a recommendation, can we get a motion? It looks like Mr. Lackey.
I do not have it. I walked off without my file. This is replat for James Free, James Free Replat Lot Consolidation. Whereas, an application has been received from Mike Novine of Burkhardt Engineering Company, 28 North Cherry Street, Germantown, Ohio, representing the property owner, Lasada LLC, requesting approval of a record plan to consolidate one existing lot and two part lots into a single new lot consisting of 0.725 acres. And whereas, this request constitutes approval of a final record plan for the newly described lot. And whereas, the Planning Commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, I move that the applicant's request for approval from a final record plan for James Free Replat be approved with the following conditions to be performed prior to the Planning Commission's signatures. Condition one, the surveyor shall seal the record plan. And condition two, all instances of Rockville shall be replaced with the corrected Rock Hill.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rethman got it.
All right. Any final discussion? All right. Call the Roll, please.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Waskey?
Yes.
And Mr. Schuman?
Yes. Second item on the agenda is a workshop, and I assume this is going to be just pretty much a discussion, that it would be okay for us to ask questions as you get into this?
Yeah, that's what we're anticipating as well.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to let know, we're not going to be formal. Don't wait for me to call on you. Just feel free to throw out any questions. If we start stepping all over each other, we'll try something different.
Sure.
All right.
Yeah, we have a couple of things prepared just to kind of get you acclimated to what we're actually going to be doing. We haven't had a workshop for quite some time, so it'll be a little bit of some getting used to, I'm sure. But you know, the main thing is, is why are we meeting? Why are we having a workshop in the first place? This really is kind of a high-level discussion to start with. It really started with a study that we performed, Ryan and myself, over the last year where we examined every piece of commercial property that is in Kettering. And what we were looking for were non-conformities. And a quick refresher, for those of you who don't remember what a non-conformity is, it's something that doesn't comply with our current code. We found that virtually every property that was developed prior to 2015 contains a non-conformity of some type. Why 2015? That's when we passed the new zoning code, so things that were developed after 2015 do comply with the current code. But that's why 2015 is noteworthy there. Of those non-conformities that we found, most of them were very minor. Most of them were things that were easily solved. Maybe they're missing a tree, or there's, you know, some little small thing like that that they're missing. Maybe it's gates on the dumpster enclosure, stuff like that. But we did find that where there were some sites that did require a little bit more effort and considerable amount of effort or money in order to solve those non-conformities. And these are the sites that we're most concerned with, and that's kind of why we're meeting is to deal with those kinds of situations. Again, this is a high-level discussion. We probably will get into some details as we go on, but we want to make sure that we start out here and work our way down. But we want to make sure we get a good foundation as to what we're talking about. We'll go through some examples as part of the discussion. We have some sites prepared. Those were in the memo that we sent out. If there's other sites that come to mind, we can abandon these and go and look at those. We're not beholden to that list. We just wanted to make sure we had something teed up to talk about. We don't have to get through everything tonight. We don't, you know, this will probably take a couple of sessions to get through to make sure we get the job done. We want to make sure that we don't do it too fast. We want to make sure that it's a job well done rather than doing it hastily. Basically, council has asked us, staff as well as planning commission, to evaluate how we address reuse and redevelopment. Are there areas of the code that we could improve that would help facilitate those things? Are there areas of the code that are in the way of getting those things done? You know, we want to make sure that if there's code provisions that are important that we're not addressing or things that could be relaxed, that we address those with the code. Some things we won't be able to fix with the code. They're external of that. But if there's things that we can affect, that we should change, we want to take care of those moving forward. First, what do we mean by reuse or redevelopment? It's really encapsulated with those terms themselves. Reuse, we're talking about uses, you know, swapping out a use for another use. A good example of that is Pet Boys. It used to be on Wilmington Pike. It was there. It was an auto repair and auto parts store. It was reused of that was that Udora's in there now, which is a microbrewery. Really, the physical aspects of the site, the building is still there, the parking is still where it was, the landscaping is pretty much the same. It really is just a reuse. There's been some interior alterations done, but it's mostly a reuse of that, of that property. When we talk about redevelopment, what we're talking about is new structures. Usually, it's going to be, the site's wiped clean and we have new development onto the site. But it could also be a partial bit of redevelopment as well. You might have part of a building torn down and then an addition onto that, or maybe there's some buildings that are encapsulated by a larger building that then swallow those up. So, but usually, we're talking about a new structure, and that typically is, it can be independent of reuse. You could keep the use the same, knock the building down, and put the same use back, but that would still be a redevelopment. So there's just, we want to make sure that when we throw those terms around, that we are meaning something specific. Why do we even regulate non-conformities? Why do we care? Really, that comes down to, the zoning code is establishing a baseline, a baseline of standards for the community. And without that baseline, we don't have a framework or a marketplace to function in. So basically, those rules are setting up a set of standards that create a stable and fair real estate market for all of us to operate in. Somebody makes an investment, they want to make sure that their investment's going to be protected, and that they're going to be able to recoup the money that they've put in and reasonably have a safe way to recapture that investment and to make some money. Without standards, though, we have what could potentially be a bad situation, and that is a gradual decline in value and an erosion of those, of those physical aspects until we have a situation where investment is negligible. So a good way to think about that is, and we see this around town and different places in Kettering somewhat, and that is, building is first built, you have a user that goes into that building, and that's great. Over time, the building gets a little bit worn out, maybe that first user leaves, and then the next user that goes in typically matches up with the condition of the building as it is. And over time, as those things kind of generally erode a little bit, you end up with a certain point where you have a user that's in a worn-out building that needs to be updated, but if you don't have a basic set of standards that's there to backstop that, it can just freefall and just kind of go to where you have a building that nobody wants to be in at all, and it just sets their bacon. So that's not what we want. We want to make sure that we have a backstop, and the zoning code does that for us. There is an expectation with zoning codes that they're enacted with the idea that compliance happens over time. You know, we have the zoning code in place, but we don't immediately go out and knock on everybody's door and say, "You're going to have to, you know, tear this down and rebuild that." The zoning code really only comes into play when somebody is doing something brand-new, they're building it for the first time, or when somebody is making elective changes. Like we said, maybe they're doing a major renovation, or maybe they're wanting to do an expansion on their site or something like that. So that's really the only time the zoning code comes into play. The rest of the time, it's just sitting there dormant. Most people don't have any interaction with the zoning code at all. It's only at those times when they're building something brand-new or they're making an elective change on their site that they ever even know that zoning code exists. So that kind of establishes the baseline of why we're even here and what we're doing. But now, I want to make sure that we all understand what we're talking about in terms of what is a non-conformity? When does that, what are the trigger points that we have in our zoning code? When does that actually get, you know, triggered? When are we actually going to have a moment when that person says, "It's no longer dormant. The zoning code is affecting me"? Right now, what we have is, that's when there's a new use. The zoning code's trigger for that is whenever a new use is established on a site. And that can mean a couple of different things, though, like what would be considered a new use? So obviously, if you build, if you have a blank site and you build a new building and you put a new use in there, that's easy to understand. We all get that. But sometimes, a new use could be a change of use. So let's go back to that Pet Boys example. Pet Boys was in there, they were automobile repair and auto parts. So that was a specific type of use that we have. When Udora went in, we considered that to be a new use of the property because they weren't a continuance of the old use. So that would be one thing. Another one is when a use times out. So like when Pet Boys was there, if you remember, they'd left, and then there wasn't anything there on that site for a long time. In the state of Ohio, you have 180 days or six months to basically, if you leave with a use, you have to put, a use has to go back in order for it to be considered continuance, a use that's in continuance. Now, the ownership can change. You could turn, you know, everybody could, it could have been Pet Boys left, they could have, and then three months later, it could have been AutoZone moved in, and we wouldn't consider that to be a new use. That would be a continuance of the same use because it would still be auto parts and automobile repair. Does that make sense? Anybody have any questions on that?
No, but just to kind of clarify and give another example. So a lot of these non-conformities, or at least some of them, happen because the code's passed and they exist prior. The code really doesn't address the things that exist prior. The one that stands out in my mind all the time is the White Sale Inn.
Yeah.
So it's right in the middle of a residential area, and it's a bar. So as long as it stays a bar, so new owner, transfer the license as long as it stays a bar, does it within 180 days, it's allowed to continue.
Right.
As it is. However, if it went to change use, then it would have to go under the current code. So just...
Yeah. So that brings up, there's, the next thing I wanted to talk about, and I'm glad you hit that, is that we have things that are considered abandoned, and then we have things that are considered, you have the right to continue something. So like the White Sale Inn, they have the right to continue that use in perpetuity. They don't ever have to leave. They can stay there as long as they want. There are some exceptions to that. We could change the law and say that, give them a sundown time, which would basically give them a chance to recoup their investment over some time, and then they would have to leave. We don't have anything like that in Kettering, though. Some communities do have a sundown provision for uses that are non-conforming. We don't do that anymore. When we did the new code, we got rid of that. But White Sale Inn, they have the legal right to continue. And people know that more, better known as grandfathering. So you get to keep doing it until the time that you stop. So abandoning a use, now, some people sometimes will get a little tricky with this, and they'll say, "Well, no, I left, you know, the utilities are still on." And it's like, that doesn't constitute an act of use for the way that we have our code set up. You have to be actively engaging in your use in order for it to be continued. So you'd have to be, a good example of that is Air City Janitorial Supply, which is on Wilmington Pike. It's across the street from the Kawasaki, old Kawasaki dealer that was there. They have not been in use for a long time. But, you know, you couldn't go in, you couldn't go in there, knock on the door, and buy anything at all, but if you go in there and look in the windows, there's still some products on the shelf, there's still a sign in the window, there's still some other stuff. So technically, that's not abandoned, the way that we look at that. Because he could, the owner could go in there, turn on the lights, and sell something tomorrow, and then turn the lights off and go to Florida for six months and come back and keep doing that. But if he clears out all of the inventory, you know, takes the sign down and leaves, that's what we mean by that, is that it's, there's no expectation that that's coming back. It's been let go. There's some finer points in there, I know, but can anybody think of any examples that, or anything that may seem different than that, that maybe we could help clarify? Any questions on that? Because I know this comes up a lot when we deal with the general public.
Well, just as a, for example, the old AT&amp;T building on Woodman Drive, was that functional? Was it in use for the last dozen years at all before it was torn down?
I believe they technically had a couple of offices in there for a while. I have no idea when they shut down. It's been vacant since I've been here the last, like, 10 months or so, but I do believe that they did, from its heyday until it slowly shrank, and I believe they did keep a few staff members there who operated off the property, and I think that those eventually went to the building next door, and it's been abandoned for, that property's probably been abandoned for longer than the six-month number, timeframe. So, but again, that might be an example where I think there were a few people working out of that building, so it wouldn't have been abandoned technically, even if they had that one little corner office in this three-story building. I would believe, I believe that would not be considered abandoned.
Yeah. But one other thing that we've done in the past is that, you know, there's a restaurant use, and somebody might say, "Oh, no, no, I'm still, you know, I'm still operating that restaurant." And then we go and we check the water utility department, you know, the water department, and say, "When was the last time the water was on here?" And they'll say, "Well, the water got shut off three years ago." And it's like, it's obvious that you're not running a restaurant use because you can't do that without water. So, you know, you can't wash dishes, you can't have a bathroom, you can't do some things. So there's some things that it's easier to prove that it's been abandoned in some cases than it is in others, but, you know, so abandoned is, it is kind of a, it's not completely black and white, but in general, if something has not been actively used for six months or more, that's the date that we use, and that's what the state of Ohio tells us that we can use. We could extend that out further. We could say four years, but we can't go any less than six months.
One other quick thing is just to clear, make sure my understanding is correct. My understanding, too, is on a legal non-conforming, which is basically what we're kind of addressing, is the use has to continue and it can't be, like, expanded. So for instance, if White Sale Inn wanted to add square footage or an outdoor, they would not, that's not part of their right to exist forever, to expand the current use.
There are some, there are some...
With the building, they can expand it.
Yeah, there are some things, some, let's call, yeah, let's call, there's some exceptions in fine print that goes along with that, where there are some cases where you can do some expansion. There are some cases, Ryan just mentioned, if you want to go ahead and mention that.
I believe they, like, if they had one building and they occupied, like, 75% of it, I think you can expand into that same existing space.
Without expanding the footprint of the building itself?
I believe so. There might be some, again, there's a lot of fine print with non-conformities, there's a lot of case law about this particular topic, and it's very tricky, and you'll find some contradictory cases as well.
Yeah, and I know in the past, we've had it come up with signs, signs that were non-conforming, and some might want to replace it with a different sign, but try to, or keep the old size versus conform at that point.
Yeah. Signs are pretty easy, because once you pull down the cabinet, you lose any right to continue. You can probably reface it, but you can't take it down and say, "I'm going to put up one that's a little smaller than that, but still bigger than what I'm allowed to do." It's like, no, you have to come 100% into compliance at that point.
Yeah. A recent, another recent example, there used to be a Circle K near the Dayton Community Golf Course. Circle K didn't want to be there anymore. They didn't renew their lease. The property owner knew that, that the Circle K wasn't going to renew, and they said, "I don't want to deal with this anymore. You know, it was fine while I had a good tenant, but I don't want to deal with this anymore. I'm just going to sell it." So they sold it to a new owner. That owner made it easy for us. They went in and put in a sign in the window that said, "We are no longer in business as of whatever day." You know, this is no longer here, we're closed. So we went and took a picture of that because that is, that site's actually zoned residential and has been since the beginning of Kettering. That was always a non-conforming use there. They did not try to establish the use again within that timeframe, and they lost the right to continue that. So now, it's sitting there empty right now, and I'm sure they're trying to figure out what they're going to do with it. But they, the six months went by, and it was easy to show that it wasn't approvable or that it was allowed to continue, and so that one lost the right to continue. It was considered abandoned. So that one, they made it easy for us. They told us when they went out of business, so.
So it makes it easy from determining, you know, where it sort of stands with the zoning code, but you end up with a property that's, in a sense, abandoned? And I'm assuming at some level, that's what we're trying to...
Yes.
Get our arms around, right?
Yes. That's exactly what we're talking about, is that we have, in certain cases and certain sites, it's easy, like, I've touched on this three times already, and that's the Pet Boys to, you know, to Udora. That site's an easy one. It's a building, it's got, it's got a good, you know, infrastructure that goes with it. It's got parking, it's got lighting, it's got access, the building is in decent shape, it's in a good spot on the lot, it's easy to reuse. You could have put 10 different types of uses in that building, but then you get things that are different. And that's, and we'll go into a couple of those that are on the list where, you know, the use that was there left and the ability to reuse that, or to reuse it or to redevelop it, get difficult. The Circle K one is extremely difficult, even if you wanted to reuse it as a house and to say, "Well, I'll just make it a house now." It's really difficult for that as well. That's one where probably some greater degree of intervention would be necessary to go forward on that site. But yeah, we're going to get to that stuff in just a minute. So we now understand, I think, what it means to abandon something or to change the use. So when a new use comes in, the way we have it in our code is that when you change the use or a new use is established on the site, that's when you upgrade your site. That's when you make sure that you meet all of the zoning code requirements for the site. We don't make you do anything to the building. We don't require any architectural improvements at that point. Architectural improvements are always elective. So that's something that you, as the building owner, would choose to do on your own, but we don't ever require you to do that, except, and that is when you are in violation of a setback. So if your building is too close to a setback or to a property line, and you've been abandoned, and this one, this one's a different time threshold, instead of six months, it's at two years. So if you've been abandoned for two years and you're within a required setback, then you need to, then you have to correct that. Right now, we have several properties in Kettering that we have notices of violation that have been sent out to those property owners. A good example of that is there's a Friendly's and a Liberty, it used to be Liberty Savings Bank in front of Kroger. Those properties have been boarded up for a long time. We've sent them notices that they need to be corrected. You could either add on to the buildings and bring them into compliance, or you could tear them down. Either one would be fine. But it's because they were abandoned for over 24 months, and so something, they're in violation of a setback and they need to be brought into compliance. So that's the only time we mess with, we mess with a building at all, is if it's been abandoned for two years and doesn't meet a setback. Otherwise... Otherwise, it's always an elective endeavor. The, the other thing that we have, so that it's, there's uses being established. And then the other thing, other time stuff comes into play and, uh, we've said this before is that when you, when you elect to do an improvement. So let's say that you just have a, a building that's there and you say, you know what, I'm, I just don't have quite enough parking here on my site. But I've got some green grass over there, I'm going to add 10 parking spaces to my, to my parking lot here on my site. We then have a set of triggers that are in the, in the zoning code. There's an expansion, and I'm sure you've seen some of these lists before when we look at conditional use stuff. Uh, it'll be like 5% or 10% of, uh, impervious surface area. Or we're going to make this building get closer to a residential property or we're going to do some things. And at those trigger points, then we require, we, we require some of the site improvements to be made. Right now, we do them on an incremental basis. So if it's like zero to 5%, then you have to do X amount. If it's between five and 10, then you do another amount. And if it's over that, then you have to do it all. That's how we handle it right now. Um, can you think of any examples of, of when we've done incremental?
I can think of one that we're reviewing now. But I'm trying to think of a building.
The one that we had with the church and the outbuilding, what, didn't that kind of expand beyond a certain point?
That, that triggered, uh, that was the, that triggered conditional use review, but the overall improvement relative to the site was not big enough to trigger 100% compliance. But we made them come fully into compliance with the buffer yard on that west side of the property. And they met, I mean, they met most of the other stuff, that property's not horribly out of compliance. In terms of an incremental project, we're reviewing a building addition out on, uh, Valley Thrift right now. You might have seen some work going on at that site, they added the parking lot, uh, last year and now they're working on an addition. That's triggering quite a bit of compliance with, uh, site improvement work. But again, that site doesn't have a hor- a huge number of non-conformities. A lot of it deals with the buffer yard in the back and the interior landscaping in the parking lot. But most of that site's in pretty close to being in compliance. But that project is actually big enough to trigger compliance with the architectural standards as well. Cause the addition they're building is big enough to require that, so.
At Valley Thrift?
At Valley Thrift, yes. I can't think of any others that, uh, that are either, have either been done or are under review now.
Yeah. Well, I, I, one comes to mind and that is Fairmont High School. Um, when the, um, the addition was put, put on at the rear, uh, for the, um, Career Tech Center. Is that right?
Yes.
Uh, there was a, we, that triggered compliance with the Northern Buffer Yard. So there was some, a lot of trees that were required over there. And then we did some foundation planting as well. So that, that was a case where, where there was a, a threshold went over and some compliance was needed. But it wasn't the entire site, it wasn't all of it. But Fairmont High School's a big site and so there was, there was a lot to do there, but it wasn't the entire grounds. It was just a portion of it. Uh, we do measure that cumulatively. So like, uh, as somebody comes in, maybe we, maybe that first time go around, we get them to, you know, one buffer yard gets, needs to be brought into compliance. Uh, but they only, they only did 6% of, of a triggering amount. The next, we keep track from a baseline of, of 2015. So if the next time they come in and they do 3% more, now they're at nine. And they're not quite there, they don't have to do much. But then the next time they come in, they, they go over that 10%, now they have to do whatever's required at that 10% threshold. So we do keep track of them in a, in a cumulative, uh, effort. We take, we take note of that and do, keep those calculations on file for most of the, of the larger sites that we do. So, so I'm going to go now to one of the first example that's on the list and that's Fussnecker. Uh, and I, and I think the, the reason I want to bring that one up is, is because this had, this has an interesting story as far as the, the change of use, the abandonment, um, and, and how that came into play and why, why compliance is required now. At one point in time, this was Fussnecker Sweeper Repair Shop. Uh, I don't, for those of you who, does everybody familiar with that site? Okay, so I don't need to orient you at all. The site, uh, here, it's look, it's 111 West Dorothy. I'm just going to click on it real quick so you can kind of see the property boundaries highlighted. I know this thing's in the way, but, uh, you can kind of see there, um, in that image, it looks like the building to the left is, is over the lot line. But that's really just, the camera is taking the picture here and it's skewing the building over the lot line. But it's, it's fine, it's, it's not encroaching. Just for clarity there. Uh, in this particular case, it was Fussnecker Sweeper. Uh, they knew that they were going to retire the business, they didn't want to do it anymore at a certain point. Uh, they did some, did some restructuring, sold it to themselves, um, kind of getting some stuff ready. And, uh, if you look at the, um, at the history of that, they, they have a transaction, uh, on the county website. Then, um, they're done at a certain point, they stopped. They transferred, they transferred, they then sold it to, um, the second owner. Um, who's a real, a real estate company. She bought it, uh, and then sat on it for a long time, didn't do anything with it. She then came in, uh, we, we didn't know that they were doing anything, but our engineers went out there, uh, one day because the sidewalk was all torn up. And they said, what are you guys doing, you need a permit to, you know, to, to do work in the right of way. And they said, oh, well, you know, well, fine, we'll get the permit and everything. But then we discovered that they were getting, they were going to repave the site and just put in some bumper blocks. And then they were going to open it up as a dress shop. And we said, uh, that's, we can't actually do that for you because the sweeper shop, or the sweeper place was, it was considered technical repair. So that's the specific use that it was, that it was classified as. And the dress shop is considered specialty retail. Now, even if six months hadn't gone, even if, even if it was, you know, different, six months had gone by by that point, so at that point, it's considered vacant. There's no u- no uses there waiting to be tapped into to continue. But specialty retail would be a new use there at that site. We informed her of that and said, hey, you're going to have to do some stuff here. You know, the building is going to be tough to do because, it's going to be tough to reuse because we have some, we have some standards that have to be followed. Uh, of which you meet very few of them. Um, it's going to be really difficult to get something on there, get, get it how you want. It looks like, when you look at it from, from this vantage point, that there's enough site area there. But when you actually start to lay it out, um, it only works by trespassing on, out into the right of way. And by, uh, there's, there's zero buffer yard between it and the neighbor behind. It's just a, it's just a fence on top of a, uh, on top of a concrete retaining wall. The building where it's located on site doesn't let you establish anything, any kind of circu- you can basically put a re- a circulation aisle around the building, but you can't really get any parking off of it because by the time you put the required buffer yard behind it, you do some landscaping around the building, uh, as we normally would require, you don't have anything left. You, you, it's really hard. You basically have a parking field that is, that you can utilize on, on the hill view side of the building. But you end up with like five or six parking spaces, which technically meets our code for the minimum number. But she didn't think that was enough to su- to support her dress shop. So at that point, she said, I, I don't want to do this, I don't want to, I don't want to deal with this site. So the, she then sold it to, uh, a new, a new property owner. Current property owner. Uh, this person was going to, uh, buy the property, tear it down and redo, and build something new. Uh, that's what their plan was from the get-go. Uh, but as they started to get into it, they said, well, maybe I do want to just reuse the building. We then told them, okay, the six months was over, so you have to upgrade the site. But you should be aware, there's a 24-month timeframe that's, the clock that's ticking because the building doesn't meet the setbacks. And we said, so be aware that on a certain date, the building is not going to meet the, meet the setbacks anymore. You're going to have to start over from scratch or modify the building somehow. Like we said before, you can do partial redevelopment. They kind of sat on their hands for a while. Uh, they had some good deals that, that came their way and they, they elected not to take advantage of them. Um, and so we're still, we're still here with the building. That, the time, the, the clock, uh, passed, the, the shot clock ran out, so to speak. Uh, and now we have a vacant site in a building that doesn't meet the zoning code, um, meet the setbacks and would, would most likely need to be redeveloped by, by wiping it clean.
Quick question, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I mean, is there relief through BZA?
You, you could technically get, uh, you know, the BZA is a good tool to, to do some things, but.
Could you explain, cause I mean, that is a good question, what their role is when it comes to non-conformity?
Yeah, sure.
And how it's handled versus?
Yeah, so, so the BZA is there to basically provide, to, to provide relief for a property that has some kind of defect. It is, it is not appropriate for the BZA to basically act as a legislature, a legis- legislative body. So like, if, if you said, hey, I want to reuse this site, but I'm going to need 30 variances or I'm going to need, you know, variances that are so far away from what the code says, they effectively are rezoning the site through a variance. Um, and courts in Ohio have not been okay with that. They don't want you to do that. They, they would say the appropriate thing to do would be to change the zoning law itself. Uh, or to rezone, you know, maybe put this into another district that makes sense. And so, so the BZA, BZA can do variances for, for stuff like this, but in this particular, in this particular one, I hate to use the word catastrophic, but it, it has so many things that are, that are bad with it that it, it would basically be being used as a legislative body.
I guess the reason I brought that up and whether this is a good example or not, is you had mentioned setbacks. So obviously, if you, if you're over a setback, your, your only relief is to make your building get off, you know, to tear down part of your building. And if, if, if one relief would be, it's like, okay, well, here we're going to encroach on here. Make an application, whether that would fly or not, regardless of all the other maybe 30 things with this one. But if, if your one major non-conformity was, okay, we're now over this, 24 months is gone, would that be something, an area of relief that then might put a property, um, back in production, back in play?
Well, in this, in this particular case, the setback non-conformities, actually it's too far away from the front property lines. We have maximum setbacks, correct?
Yeah, in this particular case.
And that's the case with, uh, I believe Liberty Savings Bank and Friendly, Friendly's as well. So that doesn't answer your question, but kind of a, kind of a unique, uh, issue to have.
And. Sorry, Ryan.
Nevermind.
The, the, the thing that, that makes this site special is that, is that even if you put this one in any of our other districts and said, okay, well, we'll just, we'll put you in a different district, it doesn't work. Because, because the dimension, we, in order to do a, a two, a two-way drive aisle plus parking, uh, you need 45 feet to do that. The distance right now, if you went from just the face of the building out to the front property line is 44 feet. If you go in the back, it's exactly 40, it's exactly 45 feet across the back. But that means that there's no buffer yard for that neighboring property. They get nothing. Um, and that might be okay in one, you know, maybe that's, there's a special case for that, but the property is zoned business. So you could put a, you know, a Burger King drive-through here on the site and you'd have a variance of zero for, you know, and it's like, is that okay? Probably not. Um, I, I would, I certainly wouldn't want to be subjected to that if I was the neighbor. But, yeah, the, the other dimensions that are around the building, you know, distance from, from building to property line is, there's just not enough dimension there to get compliant parking. Um, you know, maybe a variant, maybe the variance would be, hey, we're going to go 43 feet instead of 45 and maybe that, maybe that works. Now, we do have the ability to do that now. And that's, I think that's important to bring up is that we do have tools in our tool belt and our tool chest that we can vary some of those standards when it comes to landscaping and layout. We do have that ability now. But this one would be, you'd be doing it everywhere and, and you'd end up basically, basically, once you did all the stuff, you'd have exactly what it is now. And that brings up another, another question and that is, you know, what is, what, what level, you know, what does Kettering want to be? You know, do we, because we have a lot of these, a lot of our catastrophic sites are fully paved. There's no landscaping, it's just building and pavement. And is that okay? Do we want, or, you know, what level of that is, is, is all right, that we're willing to live with? Um, we do some of that now when we do plan review and we have existing sites. We do have the ability to say, well, it's supposed to be five feet here, but, you know, we can't get it to fit on here, so we're going to go four and a half feet, cause that'll work. But, you know, at the same time, we're not going to say, we'll do, you know, you can have a six-inch buffer yard. It's, uh, you know, we, we don't have the ability to do that. But yeah, this, this site is, this site fits into the, one of those things where it's like, even if we put it in other, in other districts, we still can't make it work for us.
And one-way circulation angled parking doesn't work or it didn't work for how many spaces they wanted?
Uh, it, it didn't work for how many they wanted. Once, you, you can get one-way circulation around, uh, you can do a couple of parallel spaces in the back and then you could do some, you could do some parking along the hill view side. One thing that is unique to this particular pattern district, if, if the building was okay where it was, is that parking is not supposed to be permitted between you, between the building and the right of way. You're supposed to be, the building is supposed to be up. So you could park along hill view, cause we could, we could call that a street side yard. But we would want you to not be able to park between the building and Dorothy Lane. So once you start laying that out, you lose a couple of spaces, even if you kind of went along the side and kind of came up and extended the parking down the side there. So we, that's, that's one of those things where this particular, I'll back up for just a second. This particular location is not in our typical suburban district. Um, you know, our, our typical suburban district, which we have a lot of, is, is like, um, the area around Meyer. We have a s- a minimum setback for the building. We have, um, landscaping, a landscaping ring around the outside of the property, a landscaping ring around the building. We've, you know, dumpsters or, or screens, that kind of stuff. It's pretty standard suburban development. Um, we have a lot of that. We have, most, most of our pattern districts are suburban style districts. We have a select few areas in Kettering where, uh, we are attempting to better match, the walkability of the area with a development pattern that matches that. So by bringing buildings up close, uh, that helps to do that. Um, you know, we've, we've talked about this in the past. But one of the things that also does is that, uh, to give you an idea, when, when we laid this, we laid this site out for the person who's the current property owner. They had a, uh, they were going to build a two-story office, um, medical office building there. We were able to get about 8,000 square feet of building onto that site and meet all of the parking and meet all of the required setbacks and everything else in buffer yards. Uh, doing it, doing it according to the neighborhood center way. If you laid this out with the suburban center or, or suburban standards, you would end up with a little tiny postage stamp building in the middle. So it, our, our zoning code is set up to, to try and, you know, we're trying to achieve a walkability thing and everything else, but we're also creating value on these sites. We're, we're creating the ability for somebody to actually reinvest. Because if we made them do a suburban style thing, they'd never do it. Because they wouldn't be able to get enough square footage on the site to, for it to make sense. So. But typically, when we look at a site like this where we start, you know, we start by saying, is it a, you know, we, we evaluate the use. So that's where we started, we said, time ran out for them. We, we have the zoning code and we use that kind of as, as a roadmap when we're doing a review. Uh, we look at, we look at the, um, uh, development pattern districts, so we look at the setbacks and stuff like that. Uh, so we evaluate that, the site doesn't meet the, the required setbacks. Uh, but then we start, then we start to go through the other stuff and it's cert- and it immediately jumps into site issues. And when we're looking at that site, you know, the generic thing that still applies and that is that usually there's a ring of landscaping that goes around the outside edge. In, in this particular area, it would be on the north boundary there at the top. There would be a required buffer yard here. Uh, that would be usually, I think that's 15 feet is what's supposed to be there, 15-foot wide buffer yard. Uh, with a bunch of trees and some other stuff in there, maybe a fence. Uh, along this east, I'm sorry, west side, there's a five-foot requirement. Uh, along this east, I'm sorry, west side, there's a five-foot requirement there. On the, uh, Hillview side and on the Dorothy Lane side, there's not a minimum buffer yard that's there. But if you have a, there's streetscape trees that are required. If a building is there, you don't have to put streetscape trees in. You know, if you bring the building all the way up, you don't have to plant trees. But if you have parking or anything like that, or or anything that's there, that's got to be setback at least five feet from the right-of-way, basically, so that we can pl- plant a hedge and plant some trees in there. We call that streetscape planting. So that's, that's where we kind of start on the outside, and we'd say, okay, you know, is there any of that here? Uh, in this particular case, there's virtually no buffer yard on the site at all. The plants that are along Dorothy are actually in the right-of-way. The property line is is right there. So this is actually, you know, the plants that are out here are actually in the right-of-way. Uh, they're not on the site. And, uh, there's a small kind of, there there used to be, it's gone now, but there used to be some plants here, and there was a retaining wall here. That that would, we would count that towards some things, but we wouldn't be able to count all of that. After we do, after we look at that, there's typically a ring of landscaping that goes around the base of the building. It's, that's pretty standard across all districts, it's always five feet. However, when we get into these existing sites, uh, when we're looking at that, we're usually trying to see if we can make a site layout work. And so we're usually trying, we usually are doing a little bit of push and pull on that to to say, well, hey, you've only got forty-five feet here. Instead of doing landscaping across the base of the building out the back, where nobody can see it, we'll do so, we'll do a parking lot island at the end, you know, or we'll, so we have some, we have, we have a clause in our in our landscape and buffer yard ordinance, it's called substitution of standards. And that basically allows us to substitute. And then we look at screening, you know, is anybody using toters, are they using trash dumpsters, stuff like that? So we're trying to get people to comply, but, you know, the code does say, we're supposed to have landscaping on the site. We're supposed to go around the outside edge, we're supposed to go around the the base of the building, and we're supposed to screen stuff. One of the areas that we that we think could be changed, that we believe could be different, is the buffer yard ordinance itself. It'll say, you have to have fifteen feet. And I don't know why fifteen feet is the magic number. You know, uh, in in years pa- it, in years past, we would, we would do, um, you know, before we had PUD and we had the buffer yard ordinance in place, we would be looking at stuff like that, and we would say, well, we want to cover up the building, we don't want to have to see it. We want to, you know, the neighbor doesn't want to have to see that thing over there. But we have architectural standards now, so we don't let people make ugly buildings. We make people screen all the rooftop equipment, we make people screen all of the utilities and mechanical stuff. So may- maybe there's a, you know, I, right now, we probably require more trees than the average community. Uh, would, what would you say?
Uh, I mean, it it varies. I think one part of the buffer yard ordinance that's unique compared to where I've worked is the buffer yard standard between like uses.
I was going to ask that. I mean, in this one, you said, to the west there, this needs a five-foot buffer yard. And that would mean, I would assume, the building next to it should have a five-foot buffer yard on its east side. And I'm kind of thinking, really, what's the point? I mean, when you got two kind of uses like that, they're right there, is that...
Yeah, yeah, like, you kind of hit it pretty well. The, I've seen buffer yards between like uses, but a lot of the time, the interpretation is like, right now, it's five feet, um, and the, you're right, it'd be five feet on the west side of the Fuss Nagger property and five feet on the east side of the KNA Architecture property. And then within each of those buffer yards, each would have to plant three group B trees and one group A trees for every hundred feet. A hu- hundred...
Yeah, back, back to what's the point? I mean, with the two...
That's one of the, yeah, that's one of the sections we're looking at tweaking a little bit. And in, and in terms of the width and amount of trees in the buffer yards between like business and office uses and residential, that's a pretty, I'd say that's pretty standard. The way our code is written, you have the, like a D-type buffer yard, and then there's an alternate one. And same with C, you have normally, the, if you want to go with the alternate buffer yard, it's a little narrower, but you have to have a fence instead of just a lot of, and so fewer number of trees. And as you get up, uh, in the more intense uses, um, the plantings get more significant. But, uh, where I've worked before, a lot of the standards are very general. It'll be like, you need to have a dense, a dense planting of, uh, trees and vegetation and a hedge meant to, it'll, it'll, it would say, uh, to the satisfaction of the planning commissioner, to staff. Our code here is like, you need this number of group A trees, this number of group B trees, this tall of a fence or a hedge. So it's very good in that you know exactly what you need, um, to satisfy the requirements. But it comes, becomes tricky when you have properties that are a few feet off. Like, they could, they can work, except for they're a couple of feet off. Uh, would it be better to have, give the ability to narrow that slightly, and maybe, well, we'll let you narrow it, but you have to do...
Right, I was going to say, you could do a, this for that.
Yeah, like a slightly...
You know, you don't, you don't have to do that over here, if, yeah, put an extra something over on this.
Like, like a slightly taller fence, depending on what the use is, depending on the elevation changes, uh, more evergreen trees versus like group A or deciduous trees. And you might, we might be able to do that today with the substitutions clause, but it's not really clear in terms of the depth of the buffer yard. So that's one area that we're looking at possibly having a little bit more flexibility.
Yeah, and, uh, just, just, uh, something to point out, too, is that in this particular zoning di- or pattern district, the side yard setback is zero. So you don't have, you, i- i- so if you were to build a building within that, you can go into that buffer yard. Basically, the code says that you can eliminate the buffer yard if the building is so close. But that's only in this particular, you know, circumstance. Neighborhood Center on on the Development Pattern District map is blue. And if you zoomed out at the whole, looked at the whole city of Kettering and looked on the screen, you wouldn't be able to see the blue. It's, it's like, uh, there's only a couple of properties in town or districts. This particular area is like that because it's surrounded by walkable area. Um, you know, the Oakwood Business District is around the corner, they're all up at, up at the street. So this is kind of, I think it ends right here at this, at this block, and then it kind of goes over to, it hits Arrow Wine, and then it it continues down Far Hills to about where Hanson Audio is, and then it stops. Uh, and then I think it happens again near Town and Country. And then it's Stroop and Marshall, there's a little node there, but that's it. Most of the, most of the, of Kettering is automobile-oriented, uh, and we didn't feel like that was, you know, going to change anytime soon. But where where we felt like there was the, uh, a good, good density, good, uh, walkability, the infrastructure was there, uh, that that was an area that would be appropriate to accommodate that in the future. And there's lots of good planning reasons for that, but, uh, I won't get into that right now. But yeah, there, in this particular, in the Neighborhood Center, the side yard setback is zero, so you could put a building there.
There would be another, other noncompliant properties in that area you spoke of as well, right?
Yeah, there are a number of others.
Sherwin-Williams, Big Sky Bread Company, they would all have parking between...
Yeah.
The building.
James Free's not, they're, they're fine.
Right.
They're compliant, and so is Hanson Audio right now. They, they both have, the buildings are up to the street. Let's see.
I mean, Greve's setback...
Yeah.
On the other side of the street.
Well, the, now, individual buildings themselves don't, they can be back there. So like, let's take Town and Country for, for instance. Town and Country is there, and we don't expect them to knock the building down and put it back up on the street. Even if it were, you know, it could go a long time and be there. It actually has an exemption built into the code that if you're over a certain size property and you're over a certain amount of square footage and you're setback so far, you can stay there. But if somebody builds something new, such as Chick-fil-A, they have to come up to the corner, which is what they did. So, um, yeah, Town and Country doesn't come into play there, or even, even Eichel Burger, they're in the same Neighborhood Center, but they're compliant, the the shopping center itself is, but the two little outbuildings are not. They could add on to them. The Friendly's building could be reused as a restaurant, and they could do an outdoor dining area that's, that surrounds the the building, and we would count that as meeting the setback. We've had other projects that have done that. But in in that particular case, the master, the the plan from Kroger and and from the property owner is to not have those buildings there at all. They, they plan to have that as parking, so, um, that's their plan. We haven't seen any action on that to date, but they could put a building there up on, up on the, up close, and that would be okay.
Like what Chick-fil-A did.
Yeah. Other, you know, right next door, the, uh, the, uh, the dentist office that that you see on the, in the lower right-hand corner, they're fine, uh, they would be compliant. So yeah, we do, we do have some things there that are, that are noncompliant with this site. I think I'm going to go to the next site, uh, so that we can kind of get an example of what, so we don't get too bogged down in what Neighborhood Center demands of 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 certain folks. I do not remember what the name of that is, so I gotta just go over to it. So pardon my scrolling. I think the next one on the list is the, um, the former Syampad Thai, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, okay, thirty twenty-seven, that's this one right here. Uh, this, this particular site is located in, I believe, suburban is the Development Pattern District. The building meets all the setbacks, it's fine where it is, doesn't have to change. If somebody wanted to reuse this site, they could, they could without having to really mess with the building at all. They have, the things that are, that are nonconforming about this site when we evaluated it is that there's, there's, as you can see, there's no buffer yard north or south. There's not really any landscaping around the building to speak of. There's a, I mean, there's a couple of potted plants, that's, that's basically it. The dimensions, north and south, don't really lend themselves to a conventional layout of kind of doing. Right now, they had it set up where you you did a dive-in with some angled parking, uh, north and south, but it was, it was very tight. And what, if you added in any landscaping that we would want you to have, then you, that gets eliminated. We did lay this out for a couple of different prospective tenants, um, over some time, and we, we were able to get this to be a compliant property with just basically some site work. As you can see, there's also a considerable amount of of land area there that's not being utilized. So that it does have the ability to, even if they lost a few parking spaces and had to construct, you know, three or four in the back, they have plenty of space, uh, to do that. If they wanted to expand in the future, they have room to expand as well. Uh, the main thing that we had here that that was really kind of difficult to deal with is, uh, at the, at the two drive approaches, uh, we don't want you to have two, we only want you to have one. That's one thing that we have in the zoning code. Um, as well as the engineering doesn't want you to have, we want to eliminate extra drive approaches if we can. Uh, but the other thing that we have here is that we have something called minimum throat length. Uh, I don't, have you guys ever heard that before? Okay. Basically, it, minimum throat length is a measurement that goes from the curb line, so not the property line, but the curb line, back to some distance onto the property. And what we want, what, in this case, it's forty feet. And that puts, that, that's somewhere about right here, from curb line to to here. Basically, within that, that area, we don't want you to have any left turn movements or decision points when you're driving in the, in your car. You're supposed to be able to get off of the right-of-way, and if somebody's backing up out of their space, that you can both stop and not create an accident out in the right-of-way. So both cars have the ability to, that's where forty feet comes from. So you have somebody backing up and somebody pulling in at the same time. They can both reasonably have enough room to be there in this, in the, in the, uh, the apron and not create an accident in the right-of-way. That is a standard that that made this one a little bit tougher, because that meant that they lost all the parking that they had in front of the building. That pushed the parking to the, to the, at the rear of the building and along the sides, they could have some. The tenants that we had were fine with that. They thought that that was an acceptable thing, they didn't really, it didn't matter to them too much. But we've had other tenants say, yeah, never mind, that's a deal breaker for them, they, they want to have those, those spaces up front. But that's a case of, you know, the suburban standards are are working fine, and there's enough space on the site, but, you know, there are some things that that would go into play there. Uh, we've, the, there's a case there where, you know, right now, the two sites are fully paved, you know, north and south. Does adding in a buffer yard in that location do much? You know, does that, does that, by putting a ten-foot strip of landscaping along there, does that do, you know, does that do enough? Uh, would that be okay if maybe it was just a shared buffer yard, and they only had to put in five feet? Shared, and then, and did that and put some trees in, and would that be enough? You know, those are the things that we're kind of looking at. Thoughts? You know, what would you, if you, if if these guys were coming in, what would you want them to do? You know, uh, obviously, you guys are, have a little bit of, uh, knowledge of what the code requires, but, you know, what, what, what does Kat, what does Kettering really want them to do in order to to reuse that space?
All of these spaces are tight to use, to get into and get out of, because I've, you know, we've all been to all of them. They're just, frankly, they're not real friendly. And I don't know how to make it so.
I think we want to minimize as much turning action as possible.
Yes.
Too, too many ins and outs. Not good.
Now, the other thing, I mean, you're looking at, what, a five, six-plus lane road that you're slowing down to stop on all these entrances and, and exits, so that's less than ideal.
Yeah.
That's one of the challenges of these corridors that developed during the early automobile dominant design patterns. There's tons of curb cuts, tons of narrow sites.
Strode is the term I see.
Yes, strode. And they become very challenging to reuse, and the point David made is, sites depreciate over time, and the zoning code's kind of the floor that you hit, where you can't go below that. And you have some sites that are, they've hit that floor, or they've gone below it, and they need to bring it up to a certain amount after they've been abandoned so long. And there's a lot of sites like this, there, you can do it, it's just, it's not a matter of, it's not a turnkey. You have to do quite a decent amount of work... ...to get it ready to go.
Now, this, this particular site, the reason why it's sitting vacant does have some to do with that baseline standard of zoning. But, um, there are some external factors, and we can get into those after, after we kind of go through what, what things we would like to see here, but, uh, there are some, some external reasons why the site has has remained vacant.
I mean, in terms of what I think would, um, versus, you know, trying to get side yard buffers, since once again, if it's all sort of commercial use, and there's, you're, you're looking at something that's going to be really teeny-tiny anyways, and it's like, okay, versus seeing a bunch of little soldiers marching down. I mean, could you sort of concentrate that up front? I mean, if it was a restaurant use or whatever, I mean, developing a, a nicely landscaped and, you know, whatever, with, you know, whatever amenities in terms of a patio up front and saying, okay, well, what if you, you put that in there, would that be enough to attract somebody? And then, you know, do whatever we can to, you know, get the parking on the side, you know, how you get that down to, uh, you know, parking with, uh, one, you know, eliminating one curb cut, I'm not sure how that works.
Curb appeal in the front...
Yeah.
...of those properties would make it attractive, and then access, easy access in. I can see parking on the side and the back.
Is the code part of the reason that Udora has such a nice outdoor patio area, so they couldn't, couldn't put parking there, or...
No.
Okay. Just kidding, because all these things we're talking about, it's like, well, that explains pushing it out.
It, it, when, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's a hundred percent the code. No, the, 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 the main reason there that why they have a ni- why the outdoor area is nice is because they were able to take advantage of a previous code requirement. So when, when pet boys went in, uh, we, and we've carried that forward in the new code, has, it kept this standard that the old stuff had, and that is that if you have, uh, service bays or overhead doors that face the right-of-way, you have to screen them. Uh, we don't want to, except in, in select locations, we don't want to look at overhead doors. So the code says that in in several different pattern districts, that if you have overhead doors that face the right-of-way, uh, you've got to screen them. So what you see there is mature landscaping from when pet boys went in. When Udora went in, you would, you, we told them, you can limb those up, you can cut some of them down, you're not required to have that much, because typically, business owners don't want to screen their business from customers, potential customers. typically, business owners don't want to screen their business from customers, potential customers. Uh, they said, no, we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep that landscaping because we have, we, we have western-facing facade, and in the afternoon, that sun's gonna beat down on the building, and that landscaping is gonna provide some shade for the outdoor space. So they kept it, and, and incidentally, it also, even though it's, it can't be that much, but the, the amount of noise that it seems to knock down also seems to help. So Udora had, is benefiting from a previous code requirement that, but it, it isn't applied to them now.
You would never guess you're close to the Wilmington-Dorothy intersection when you sit right next to the road there. It's very nice.
Yeah. David, just kind of a comment towards what you said, what do we wanna see? I mean, I think, first thing I'd like to see is an active, open business in these locations, rather than, um, vacant properties. And I would hate to see a, um, a code that is so stringent that we are perpetuating vacant properties uh, in the community, rather than, um, finding a way to, um, help people open a business, and, and get these, get these properties in use again.
Well, I'll just, I'll just, uh, go ahead and, and, I'll, now I'll tell you the real reason why this one's vacant, no. I've, since I've teased you to the end of the, uh, to the, of the scrolling, you know. Uh, no, the, this one had, this one has a particular, uh, issue, um, and that is that the, and actually, that's, that's kinda the, one of the things that was on the, on the list of, of the agenda for the, for the meeting, was talking about external reasons why some of these properties have sat vacant. And that's the theme with some, with these properties, is that they've sat vacant, but they've had development opportunities come through, and people have been ready to pull the trigger on those development opportunities, and take advantage of, of certain things in the code, or, or, grant money in this case on Wilmington Pike that we have available. Uh, but the, there's some aspect of the owner that prevents that site from moving forward. In this particular case, the owner is, is, uh, not a, not a, doesn't have a deep portfolio of properties. I believe this is their only one. Uh, they don't necessarily have, um, an understanding of how some of the larger companies wanna do stuff, and, and Don, you can, you can probably speak to this better than I can, but there's, there's typically, when somebody goes into a space and s- and signs a lease for this, there'll be, there'll be a certain allowance for tenant improvements that are made by the owner. Uh, and they'll set aside a certain amount of money or something, uh, do I have that right, Don?
Yeah, I mean, tenant improvement allowance, TIA.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I, I'm, I'm like, I have a, a little whisper of a memory there, but, uh...
That's fine, I mean, it gets built into whatever the, you know, the pro forma for the, that thing, it's like, okay, you're, you're in a sense, loaning the tenant money, but they're paying it back on the installment plan, so.
Yeah, and, and, and from my understanding, that's a fairly typical arrangement. We've, the, the tenants that have wanted to go in here are, um, have been restaurants, uh, who are chain restaurants, national chains, um, looking to move into this site. They have located elsewhere. They, they moved on from this site. They, they are going in other locations in the area, in, in Kettering, uh, where they didn't, same rules applied, but they just chose a different site, uh, because this owner does not believe in that. Uh, they don't wanna give anybody any, any, uh, tenant improvement allowance. So they get, because, because they say, hey, uh, the city tells me we've got some stuff, you know, we've got some improvements to make, we'd like some, uh, some relief on that, and and they say, no, I'm not doing that. So, th- this site has sat vacant for some time, and in, in actuality, the user that was here before, uh, is everybody familiar with where they are now? Uh, they're at the intersection of, um, Patterson and Troyer, and it's called Mossiman Thai, is that right? It's a, it, basically, Siampad Thai left here and went to a new location, uh, and opened up their business, uh, because they, they, they couldn't negotiate with the, with the current owner. Uh, they, they weren't getting anywhere with them, so they just left, went to another site. So th- this one is plagued by an ownership issue, where, you know, they're, they're potentially keeping out tenants because of, uh, of business reasons that, that I don't necessarily know the, the reasoning behind. But that's, that's why this one has sat there. So, sometimes, sometimes it is code being, uh, maybe, uh, requiring something that, that somebody says, I, you know, I can't make that work. But, uh, sometime, sometimes it's, it's a ownership issue as well. Same for the last site that we were talking about, we, we have had real estate deals that, that were ready to go on that as well, and for, for whatever reason, they didn't, didn't, uh, didn't pull the trigger on those either. But that being said, we don't, we, we definitely don't wanna be doing something that, that keeps people from, you know, we don't wanna perpetuate vacancy.
Right.
That's, we don't wanna do that. Anybody have any other, any, any other thoughts or, uh, ideas on this, this particular site?
Not at this time, but as you said, this is probably gonna take a couple of, couple of rounds, as we see this for the first time, and give it some thoughts, and...
Does anybody have any, have any sites that they, that, that come to mind when they're thinking about, you know, like, sites like, why is it sitting there, why is it, you know?
You, you, you mentioned the two, my favorites, which were Friendly's and, and the, the old Liberty Bank, like, why are they still sitting there? How many years has it been that they've been vacant? I can't even remember.
Yeah, it's all because of Kroger's, and I think, what was it, because CVS was in there, and CVS had them locked out of the prescription business or something? So, yeah, so I mean, it's part of a bigger deal.
But, but that had nothing to do with Friendly's ice cream, they weren't part of the CVS.
No, but I think Friendly's went closed because whatever business wasn't there or something. I mean, it's not like Kroger said, I'm gonna shut you down, at least I don't think, but, yeah.
Still looks like a prime location to me. I, well, of course, I don't know, I'm not in that line of business. I have no idea.
We do have inquiries on that site from time to time, uh, we, when we always will forward those on to the, to the property owner, uh, we wanna make sure that they entertain whatever, you know, any inquiry that we get, we always do that. We try to work really diligently with property owners to, to make sure that if, if somebody's calling about their property, that we put them in touch.
I guess aside, I would have a question on David, is Wilmington Pike, uh, further down from this, where uh, buildings have been torn down, and those properties are, they've been sitting there for some time with...
Like off the Hookah and the Wonder Bread?
Crawdaddies and what that was down in there, that's...
Wellington?
Yeah, is there, I mean, is there anything going on with those vacant lots?
There's inquiries into those properties occasionally, that's one of the, some of the challenges of those sites are similar to what we talked about before, when you have these properties that developed in the early automobile dominant era, without a lot of zoning, is they're not very deep.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they were deeper until the road got...
Yeah. Well, and they, they all bought up for residential uses, so there, we've seen some, uh, plans for, I don't know about where Crawdaddies used to be, but, uh, like where the Wonder Bread site used, where Wonder Bread used to be. Seen some conceptual plans for those sites, just, it's a challenge, 'cause sometimes you have more than one owner, um, working together. And they're just kinda long and, but narrow, and then they bought up for residential uses on one side, that makes it kinda challenging, but, uh, people have looked at them, it's just...
Are people looking at, like, townhomes?
We, we have had one person inquire about townhomes, uh, they are permitted, and we think that that would be a great use.
Right.
We haven't had anybody, you know, submit plans and say, here we go.
Thinking they need to be goose.
That would be a...
Incentivized to
We, now...
get something started, and, I mean...
We, the, the incentive that we, that we have is, is that mo- the sites that have torn-down properties on them, I think, I can't think of any exceptions to this, but we own them. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, where the, there used to be a BP gas station there, I think at Harvest.
Do we own the, off the...
But we don't, we don't own the, uh, no, we don't own that one. But, uh, down there, down there where, um, Crawdaddies used to be, most of those vacant sites are owned by the city of Kettering, we do own those. Yeah, we acquired them and then tore the, tore the property down. The, the hope is that by, by having enough land clear, uh, and ready to be, and, and ready to be developed, the incentive is, is that that's been taken care of. Uh, so the sites have been cleaned up and they're ready to be developed. Uh, that has actually been the greatest draw to those sites, over other sites that may be better suited to, to development, because stuff that's discounted, all, you know, everybody goes to the clearance rack in the back of the store first and looks through that, and says, can I use any of this, and then they, then they go, alright, and then they look around for the rest of the stuff. So, that's basically what those properties are right now, is that people get, generates a lot of interest, but then, once they kind of sort through the issues and, you know, lay the properties out and do some of the other stuff, it doesn't, it doesn't fit for what they wanna do. And then, the other, we had another inquiry on the site, and the, that particular development didn't go through mostly because of, um, greater economic reasons, uh, pandemic reasons, so. But we do, we, you know, yeah.
And one challenge with those sites, not related to zoning, but you have stormwater. When there's a vacant site, it's completely, uh, pervious, and then when you read, when you develop it, it can trigger some stormwater, uh, requirements that, on tight sites can be kinda tricky to fit, and you can bury it, but that's very expensive, and you probably need to be a national, one of the national chains to be able to afford something like that.
You asked about other sites, what about the old IGA further out on Wilmington? Castro, was it Castro's place, or?
Yeah, we, we've had, again, um, we've had lots of inquiries about that. Almost without fail, most of the sites that have been sitting around vacant are not usually a problem because of, uh, regula- regulatory problems, it's almost usually always an ownership issue. Either it's a family that's fighting with each other, or there's a tenant that, that's holding out for something, or, or something like that. Mo- most of our problem properties have, there's a reason behind it. Uh, in that particular location, it's a, it's a family feud, that's, that's causing that site to just sit. Uh, and because of that family feud, they are, uh, in arrears on, uh, tax, property taxes. Uh, and that's also, we're in a holding pattern right now on doing some enforcement issues out there for, because it's, it's basically becoming a nuisance. And, uh, they're switching some attorneys and doing some other stuff, uh, so we're basically waiting for the courts to, to be involved, uh, and work some of those issues out, so. But in that particular case, if, if we were to look at it just from a strict compliance issue, property has been abandoned, there's a lot line that goes down through that property, so that where the uses are on that site are on a sep- another piece of land. So, the vacancy starts basically pa- just past the pizza place that's there and goes north. That's one lot. It's been vacant, it's been vacant for more than six months, so it's lost the right to continue. Uh, any new use that would go onto the site would trigger site compliance there, which would not be that difficult. It would cost some money, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that difficult. Building's in a fine location, it would need landscaping, lighting, curbing, some other things like that, and then they could, they could get going again. But in that particular case, it's a, it's a, it's a management ownership issue that prevents that from, from getting going again.
Is that, is that what's going on, I've seen this going on for fifteen years now, that on bigger road going south of Whip, that whole stretch down there, kinda down as you're headed towards Victoria's Secrets, but on either side of the road, nothing seems to get developed, except CJX Restaurant, which, you know, knock on wood, is still there. But all those little shops that were there, they're all gone. And nothing seems to be going on there, is there...
That, in that particular case, that, you know, the, the, really, the, the demographics of, of the, not demographics, the, uh, basically, the, when six seventy-five was built there, the, you know, the anchor tenants, so to speak, that were there at that, at that particular site, left and went to Crosspoint, that, that was developed out, out further. Uh, and, and so you have basically that, this happens, you know, sprawl goes one direction, and then it leaves a vacuum where, you know, the, the, the development used to be. So that site is really set up to be built around your typical strip mall with an anchor tenant, and then smaller shops that support, that, that are able to be there because of the anchor tenant.
Right. Even when we had Victoria's Secrets there, I know the great hope was, oh, that's gonna bring in a lot of restaurants and things like that, that, that never materialized, and...
Yeah, I mean, the size of it's more regional draw, but there's no exits off six seventy-five.
No, there aren't.
So you're, you're kinda too big for what, what you need there. You do have, um, one other property listed on the thing, would you like to go ahead and cover that, so we can kinda have an idea of the issues that that one has, and then we'll...
Pepitos.
Pepitos, then we'll wrap it up and
Sure.
maybe hit it next, next time as well?
Sure.
Let me zoom out here so I can get over to it quicker. Uh, so the Pepitos, um, I'm gonna kinda let you guys just kinda take a look at it and see if you, see if you can, uh, spot some of the issues that we have there. I think I can get one more zoom in here, there we go. So here's the, the property boundaries, you can see it in that, in that light blue. Goes around there. So, you know, we, we take a look at that, first thing we do is we look at the use, and we say, is, can anything go back in there? It's, it's zone business. You can, you know, there's lots of different uses that could go in. Uh, the inquiries that we have continued to receive is for restaurant. And in this particular case, Pepitos closed, uh, we, we know the date that it closed, it was published in the newspaper. We know who owned Pepitos before. They basically went down the street to Jorge's and opened up the restaurant there. So, at that point, we knew that that use was abandoned, and then we were able to say, okay, now we know, we know when that, that one's gonna run out, the clock's gonna run out. Now, when somebody came back in and said, well, I wanna, I wanna go back in here, they, they first said, we wanna do a cigar bar. And we said, okay, that's, that's, that's great, but we actually do have, have rules in Kettering that say that you can't do that. So, that's not, that's a use that we actually don't allow, uh, that's, that's basically uh, consumption of tobacco, and that becomes tobacco sales. Uh, tobacco sales are limited by a certain radius from other things. There's a tattoo place that's just down the street, so that one, we said, I'm sorry, we can't do that one. Uh, okay, well then I'll just, then I'll just be a hookah bar, and we said the same thing.
Same thing, right?
Uh, they said, then we'll do vapes, and we said, actually, still the same thing. So those uses never really, never really got off the ground. And then they said, fine, we'll do, we'll do a carryout, we'll do pizza and some other stuff, we said, okay, we can, we can tailor, we can, you know, we can figure out a way to make this work maybe. So we said, okay, what's the square footage of the building, how much parking do you have, how mu- you know, what kinds of things are we gonna look at for compliance? When we look at this site, what, the first thing we say is, okay, you've got two entrances and exits. And there's a reason that why it was built that way, and that's because it's using, it's using the right-of-way as circulation. Uh, we see that with, with certain sites, you know, you come in here, you go around the building and you leave. That makes, that may make sense for dry, old drive-throughs, they, they function that way. That's actually what Siampad Thai used to be, it was an Arthur Treacher's Fish and Chips. I don't know if anybody remembers that, but... Ron Hunt told me that.
I figured.
I'm not old enough to remember, but...
Oh, but I am.
But he, uh, yeah, but in this case, the, there's not a circulation pattern that's set up there, it's just actually relying on the, the, you know, if you come in, you, you, you leave either way, um, but it's relying on the right-of-way for circulation. Uh, we would look to probably eliminate one of those curb cuts, uh, and then we would look at that again and say, okay, well, we've got forty feet that we've gotta get off this, off the Wilmington Pike. Then we, then we say, okay, uh, building's really close to the north property boundary. Uh, how long was it abandoned for? Well, we, we, we actually noticed that it was, that the deadline for that, when the, when the person came in for these things, we said, you actually have like four days. Uh, so they, they, they turned in a plan and said, here's our plan, we wanna preserve our rights to, to keep that, the building set back where it is. And we said, okay, that's fair. So, uh, they, they were able to preserve their rights for that application, uh, and move forward. But then we got into looking at the site, and we said, okay, well, you, you don't have a buffer yard in the back, you don't have a buffer yard on the, on the south side, you're missing some landscaping around the building. But, you know, we, we used, we looked at some substitution standards and see, to see what we could come up with, and we felt like we were able to say, you know, here's the places where we could relax it, give us a plan to show what you wanted to do. Uh, we never really got to that point, uh, because once they started to lay some stuff out, they said, well, I, I have a, you know, a five-and-a-half thousand square foot building here, and, uh... and I need 60 something parking spaces and I have like, it looks like I'm going to get, you know, 12 or 15. That's not something that we can wave a magic wand and say, you know, well, we, you know, through these reductions, we get you where you need to be. And in fact, we knew that this site was underparked even with this amount that was there existing. Because it was routine that, that people would park across the street and then run across the street back and forth when, when the BP was there or when it was, when it was even knocked down and made vacant. So it wasn't a matter of, hey, we're not that busy of a restaurant. It was like, this didn't even make sense even when they weren't that busy. So we started looking at that and stuff just didn't, didn't seem to make a lot of sense. But we did feel like we could, you know, we could make it make sense for maybe a carryout, which, which has a hard cap on the number of parking spaces required. Maybe mixing that in with a specialty retail. We felt like we could make something work here. But one of the things that we were running into was the buffer yard across the back. Right now, there's, there's a, you know, there's virtually, there's no buffer yard there. It's just parked right up to the edge. The property owner said, what if I built a, what if I built a masonry wall? And we said, well, maybe that, maybe we could substitute that and get some reduction, but you'd still probably have to do some, some trees back there. Then they got the quotes back for how much a masonry wall would cost at, at the height that they wanted to do it. And that kind of put the kibosh on that. But, you know, what are your thoughts on this site? What do you see as being problems or things where you're like, you know, what would be the big deal if, if this was reused in a business, you know, a business use?
Mr. Rethman, I saw you hit your mic, so.
I mean, it's, it's parking, it's the shape of lot. To your point, the fact that they're using the right of way for circulation. I mean, I used to like going to Pepitos lot. And yeah, it was a pain in the butt to park. You know, you're like, okay, where was it? And if, you know, you thought, oh, well, there was a spot over there. Oh no, it was a short car. Well, then you're back crossing Wilmington Pike, come around and try to go behind. So that size of building and that shape, yeah, it just doesn't lend itself to have the parking to support that intensive, I think, of square footage. Depending on, you know, if you're just going to open it up to saying any business, so, you know, where does that leave you? I mean, take down part of the building? I don't know.
Yeah, there's, so you know, maybe, maybe a solution is right sizing the building for the, for the lot.
Yeah.
Relocation of it, frankly.
It is in a difficult spot. I, I think if you were to lay it out.
Jason Properties.
Yeah, I think if you were to lay it out now with, with, you know, we, we do have standards in the zoning code to say that it needs to be this dimension or that dimension. But really, those, those, those requirements that we have are, they're not necessarily our requirements. They're kind of an industry standard, so to speak. It's, it's kind of like, you know, in fact, we, a lot of times when we get fast food restaurants or stuff like that that'll come through, we require 24, we have a minimum of 24 foot for a drive aisle. And then we have an 18 foot deep parking space. A lot of times we'll get fast food, we'll come in and they'll do 26 feet for the drive aisle and then a 20 foot deep spot, a deep space. Because they, they don't want to have anybody be tight on their site. They want it to be really easy.
And somewhat related to our discussion, when it comes to, reminded me of parking. One of the things that we found in that non-conformity study that we did, when we got into the older sites, you would find a parking lot that had been functioning for 60 plus years. This would be, the spaces would be like 15 feet deep and the drive aisle would be like 22 feet deep. And it works. I mean, it's not ideal if you were to scrape the site and redevelop it today. But if you start adding those, how many feet you need, you suddenly get eight feet of additional width you need on the site. But the parking lot might function okay as it is today. Our code doesn't really allow us to, if you're redeveloping a site or have a new use to approve that. But that might be some, one flexible thing to add. That wouldn't help this site, but it might help some other ones. And also in our code, which I think existed in the old code, we do have the ability to administratively reduce the parking lot by 15%. And Town Center, Neighborhood Center, Pattern Ditches, I think you get an automatic 30% reduction in Town Center and a 15% reduction on top of that in Neighborhood Center. And for every three bicycle spaces you have, you can reduce by, I think, up to three parking spaces. And if you have, if you have, if you have on-street parking directly in front of your frontage, obviously, again, doesn't help the properties on Wilmington. The number of spaces you fit up front, you can, it allows you to reduce by an equivalent number of spaces on the, on the site. So we have a lot of provisions in the code to reduce the number of parking that you need on the site. And despite that, you still have properties that are nowhere close to meeting the requirements.
Yeah, so what I was driving at before about talking about, you know, we have these dimensions that are, but it's kind of an industry standard. Well, you know, if somebody came in here and knocked that building down and redid the parking lot, it's all well and good that we have a minimum dimension, but they would lay it out that way anyway. They, they wouldn't, they wouldn't say, well, I'll look and see what Kettering requires of me. That's pretty standard stuff. It's, 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 that's kind of like your best practice for, for site layout stuff. So.
You don't think they would move that building either to the, say, to the left a bit? Or they'd put it right there?
It worked for them at the time, I guess you could say that.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
It'd probably be oriented that way. I don't know if it'd be shaped that same exact way.
Right.
Yeah. Generally, you know, whenever we're doing, the way that we're taught in design school to lay a site out is, is you always start with your parking first. You lay that out first. Because you don't want to try and, and you always want to try and hit a long dimension with your parking, get your circulation aisles laid out. And then you see, what area do I have left? That's where I can put my building. And that's, you know, you say, okay, well, I've, I've got enough, I can get, you know, 10,000 square foot yield on this site. You may not build that much, but, you know, there's not any point in making this parking lot go back around and snake back and forth because you're not really going to get much out of it. But to Ryan's point, you know, there's sites where we may have a parking lot that doesn't meet our design standards now, but they've been working okay. They might, but, but as it's laid out, it's not necessarily going to get your best use in there. It's because anybody who's looking at that would say, I don't want to do that. That's, that's, you know, that's just, that's just going to be something that's going to deter customers or it's going to do something. But depending on the type of business, that's where you really get into it, you know? Maybe a florist doesn't care and they're, and they're fine with that. But if you've got something that, that's automobile dependent, you know, they're going to, they're just going to, they're going to back away from that because they, they know that they just can't make that work for them.
So Mr. Roll, do you have a plan moving forward? Are you looking for us to give you a suggestion on where to go from here? What's, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I have been taking notes as we've been talking. And anytime you guys talk, I write down what you say. And so.
So let me just throw out a suggestion. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask each member on the commission their thoughts on this and how we proceed forward. Because I'm sure that, you know, some of us, you know, when you get thrown this, it's like, oh, okay, some things to think about. But, you know, we can't really necessarily do that on the fly.
Right.
Plus, I think it would be good for us to get, just kind of drive around and look for things that, you know, might be issues, might be things that we can see, might give us inspiration. Things like that. So my suggestion, or at least one possible suggestion, would be to, you know, schedule next time we have something else. That we don't have to hold a meeting just for the workshop. But next time we're getting together is to come back and, and take a look. And if you have other properties, or maybe we can send you properties that we see that we might be interested in finding out a little more about. And we can just continue the conversation with us having a chance to give some things some thought.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
It's a great idea. We really just kind of wanted to get your feet wet tonight. We kind of dumped you in. But, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, be thinking about this and I, I, that's a great idea, you know? Now, now you have it on your brain. And so now when you're driving around, looking at stuff or thinking about things, you, maybe you'll see something that you say, well, how did this get to be this way? Or maybe you'll see something, you're like, hey, I like that detail there. This, this looks good. This looks like a good way to do a buffer yard and it works. You know, what, could we do something like that? So, yeah, it doesn't even have to just be in Kettering. You know, just as you're out seeing, seeing the world, be thinking about that.
I do want to poll the commission, don't want to speak for everybody. So Mr. Lackey, thoughts, any suggestions on improving our, our plan?
No, I think your suggestion is good. I think to bring back and continue to look at, at different properties and different solutions.
Ms. Fisher?
I like that too. One thing I did notice tonight on a couple of the properties, it's the access coming off of a major street, getting in and out of these particular areas. Like the Fussnecker, like the Wilmington by the We Care Arts, that little place. All of these seem to be, to me, that's, that's an issue.
Especially left turn in, into some of these places across everything. All right, Mr. Waskey, any thoughts, suggestions?
I like the idea of driving around and maybe snapping some photos and taking them to you. One thing I, a lot of times I've been to Pepitos, I never really noticed how bad the parking layout is until now you see the top-down view. So that's.
It's all those margaritas you had.
Maybe that was it. Whatever it was.
Probably my problem, so.
But, yeah, I like the idea of just taking a look around.
Mr. Rethman, your thoughts, suggestions?
Good with the, you know, what's been discussed here. I think that's good to, you know, bring in the additional thoughts and see, see where it takes us.
Great, yeah. You know, maybe, maybe something else on the Pepitos site that, that, that's a little bit of an oddity as well. We, we don't have this in very many places. I can only think of one other example. On the south side of the building there, this is basically a one-way only. They have it, sometimes these are deceptive. They have it striped, like it looks like that's a two-way drive aisle. But that's only about like 14 feet. So if you, if you have a car parked there and you try to get past it and a car, if two cars are coming, one of them has to decide to back up and let the other car go on and out. That's kind of a big no-no, we don't want that to happen. So that's, that's. We, we only have that in a couple of other places around town. So, yeah, that's, that sometimes when you're looking at these plans from up in the air, one thing to consider is that, that's an aspirational layout right there. Like it actually, it looks like, oh, there's a functioning parking lot. But if you measured that, it.
It was how they got six more spots. They basically made a two-way drive.
Yeah.
One way.
Another site that's like that is Harrigan's.
Oh, yeah.
If you looked at it from up above, it looks like, it looks like a parking lot that's normal and fine. But if you actually go there and park, it is really cramped and tight. So, yeah, so just keep that in mind when you're looking at stuff. Sometimes things aren't as they appear.
Can they email us stuff?
Yeah.
As you find stuff to send it to us.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. If we see something or have questions, we can email and we can just add that to the, our discussion next time.
Yeah, we, that would be great. That would be very helpful.
All right, so we'll continue that workshop next time. But with, on with the agenda for this evening, our next item is audience participation. This would be the time for anyone in the audience who they would, if they would like to speak to the commission about anything, not on tonight's agenda. Now would be the time. Seeing none, signing of Platts.
I do not have anything this evening.
Neither do I.
Communications and reports.
None at this time.
Nope.
Planning Commission comments. I have none. All right, I have none myself. That being the case, then we will adjourn this evening until our next regular scheduled meeting at, we're adjourning at 8:44. The next meeting's not at 8:44, it's at another, another time and place. Well, same place. Anyway, have a good evening.